Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like, you know Sasha, you're out there, right? Sasha, can I have you take your camera off? So Sasha's visiting us via the internet tonight because she was on a field trip all day to the State House, right? What were you doing there Sasha? Just a, I'm just curious.
I was with Mr. Tebbs and we were talking with state representatives to lobby for bike safety in our area.
Excellent, thank you. So Sasha is with us tonight. Sasha is the recipient of the Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award. And is it with great, we can go through my speech here, it's a great pride and admiration that I present the Frontier Regional School Districts 2023-24-25 Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award to an extraordinary student who truly exemplifies excellence in academics, leadership, and character. Sasha is an exceptional student, standing at the very top of our class. Her academic journey is nothing short of remarkable with a rigorous slate of advanced placement courses under her belt, including AP Environmental, AP Government, AP Calculus, AP Language, AP Human Geography, and AP Statistics, earning nearly perfect scores of five on the majority of her exams. Her consistent presence on the maximum honors throughout her entire career reflects her unwavering dedication to learning. Marissa Strohke, her English teacher, said, "From passionate debates on the future of AI to thought-provoking Socratic seminars on the intersection of language and double consciousness." You guys all keeping up with that? Sasha's enthusiasm is truly contagious. She not only engages her peers but also inspires them to dive deeper into complex subjects. Her compassionate and collaborative nature paired with her drive to create positive change in her community makes her a natural leader. I can easily see myself casting a vote for Sasha in political office one day." That was from Ms. Strohke. As an athlete, Sasha is a cornerstone to Frontier athletic community. She serves as the captain of both the cross-country team and the spring track team. Sasha has earned numerous accolades for academic, for athletic excellence, including being named three-time All-League Honoree, receiving prestigious Nina Parzero Award, and being recognized with the True Blue Award. These honors speak not only of her academic skill but also her unwavering commitment to sportsmanship. Beyond the classroom athletics, Sasha is a passionate advocate and leader. Following the Supreme Court, just choked up. Following the Supreme Court ruling on Roe versus Wade, Sasha demonstrated her remarkable courage by organizing and leading a student walkout, which culminated in heartfelt speeches about women's rights on the front line of the school. The following year, she was a leader in the Purple Out, a movement that united the school community wearing purple to raise awareness about violence against women. Whether ones agrees with her stance or not, these acts show her tremendous character, convictions, and willingness to turn her belief into meaningful action, a rare and admirable quality. Sasha extends her compassionate leadership to her family and the broader community. She works alongside her mother as a voice in the Federation for Children with Special Needs, driven by her love and advocacy for her brother. Sasha's work is deeply personal, reflecting her profound sense of loyalty and care for those she holds dear. Within the school, Sasha is also the president of the National Honor Society and her class vice president. She's the co-director and founder of the Student-Led Writing Center, where she tutors peers several days a week, making lasting impact on students who benefit from her guidance. And during the summer, she works as a camp counselor, swim instructor, and shares her talents and positivity with the younger generation. As Sasha looks ahead, we celebrate her acceptance to her first choice school, Boston College. But no matter where her journey takes her, there's no doubt she'll continue to lead, inspire, and leave lasting impact as she's done in the Frontier community. So it is with my great honor to present Sasha Mallow with Frontier's Superintendent Academic Excellence Award. Now there'll be brief questions and answer period. I'm just joking. So, thank you Sasha for coming. Any comments or?
Thank you.
Congratulations. You have other plans as well, so you can take off.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, for hearing today.
It sounds like maybe we should have little video snippets to include in the video for all the financial boards. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve minutes from January 7th. Need a motion?
Both approved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? We have Tavo here for the student council report.
Hi, I'm Tavo, business owner of the Senior Frontier. I'm the student council president.
Hey, I'm one second.
We can put you right there. You sit right at the table.
Because can you guys hear?
Oh, yeah. Here or?
She's gonna want you, she's gonna watch you here.
She's gonna want, yeah.
So I love the cameras, Tyler.
Hi, I'm Tavo. I'm the president of Frontier Student Council. I did want to say congratulations to Sasha. She's a member of the student council. It's really awesome to see that, a member. That's how very active our community is, receiving that award. So recently, student council has done a variety of activities. This past month, we participated in the Greenfield High School Polar Plunge. So this was a fundraiser where students could sign up to jump into this plunge of cold water to support the Special Olympics. And this fundraiser, all told, ended up raising $10,000, which is very impactful. The musical, it's coming up, The Light in the Piazza, I believe, March 14th. Tickets are available online, so for those who are interested in Frontier's musical stylings, I would say please show up. Frontier Student Council is also looking forward to a field trip that we're going to be participating in. This field trip is going to be a three-day field trip to Hyannis with lots of other student councils. This is going to be an opportunity for many leadership trainings over those three days, and is what we've kind of been working to fundraise over the past couple of months. In addition to that, the senior class is gearing up for their kind of class field trip in March. They're going to Boston, and they're hopefully going to do some good class bonding then. This week, student council is selling carnations in light of Valentine's Day, this Friday. So we've been trying to get people to buy carnations and spread some cheer among their Additionally, student council is working to facilitate kids' game night. Been doing some work to try to maybe have an opportunity for parents to drop with their kids, have some fun, and also raise money for this field trip to Hyannis, which has been a very big tax on the student council budget. Sports this week, there's a girls' senior night tonight, I believe, and many of the teams are gearing up for Western Mass. Track is going to states, some of us for the relays and for the hurdles, and some of the wrestlers are going to Western Mass and states, I believe, and I believe the boys and girls basketball teams are both in good positions to go to states. Additionally, NHS is looking to move towards finding a charitable charity to donate all their funds to. That's something that is usually done, and now we're trying to think, what cause do we as a National Honor Society want to support? Additionally, peer leaders, kind of system of collecting all the leaders in our school, has been meeting in circle and is now working on trying to think about action steps to better impact our school community as a whole, ways to build community in our school and help strengthen bonds between grades and also like institute more student liberty. And also I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Modesto for your statement about protecting students within the school. It's really awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of good work.
Yes.
I know, it's early March, I believe it's like March 5th, maybe?
You have to breathe money quick.
Yeah.
A little pressure.
Keep us.
Well done. Awesome.
Thank you.
George, you're up next. I'm gonna go rehearse a little. I'm gonna remind everybody that in addition to any basketball games that are happening tonight, our winter concert is also taking place right now, sort of at 6:00 PM. So if you have time on your way out, stop by the auditorium, check out the winter concert. Our annual career fair and reality fair is happening on the 26th of March. This year, we've got folks coming like Chris is coming from the Recorder, we've got Baystate Franklin Medical Center is coming. Again, this year, US Fish and Wildlife, Big Y, the South Deerfield Police Department, and State Representative Natalie Blay is coming as well, and many other local businesses. So if you're able to stop by on the 26th, that'd be welcomed. This week, we are administering our health survey in conjunction with the Communities That Care Coalition. This coalition brings together schools, families, youth, young adults, and the community to improve young people's health while being in health equity. So students in grades eight, 10, and 12 are being surveyed this week. To echo what Tavo already mentioned, we'll be presenting The Light in the Piazza on March 14th and 15th at 7:00 PM, and on March 16th at 2:00 PM. Any reports, I have a link to how to get online tickets. Student council is sending two student delegates, Romi Luks-Curtis and Isla Varnen, to Student Government Day at the Massachusetts State House on April 4th. This has been an annual event since 1947, and I, once again, I dropped a link in my report if you want to, if you want to check it out. And I do want to give a public shout-out to Melissa Strohke and to Kate Blair for all the wonderful work that they're doing with our student council this year. And then finally, we're doing our annual eighth grade trip to DC, which is happening from February 25th to February 28th. There's a one-day stopover in Philly. We're going to the Kennedy Center again, Smithsonian Museums, National Portrait Gallery, US Holocaust Memorial Museum, Arlington National Cemetery, the Library of Congress, and up there. So that will be happening when we get back from the break.
Yes, there were 23 warrants reviewed and signed by Mr. Hala totaling $2,591,245.74. There's no new concerns with the budget right now. There are some account overages, but we also anticipate savings in other lines. About $2 million remains to be spent, so we're currently looking at what else needs to be encumbered. For example, if you look at the report for the general fund right now, the health insurance line shows a significant amount still available. That's because we pay it monthly when the bill comes in, because it changes every month, but we're going to estimate, get that encumbered so that we can really see what we're looking at for end of year. So, nothing major to report, but I'm happy to take questions if you have any.
Questions for Sheldon? Next, we'll move on to public comment. There's a, we have a sign-up sheet here, but I think a couple other people maybe have joined. Is anybody else here for public comment? Nope. And anybody online here for public comment? That would like to speak? Lou?
All right. Thank you.
I have a statement that I'm going to make prior to public comment. I'd first like to recognize the number of individuals who reached out to us about, in particular, the topic of graduation requirements and competency determination that's on the agenda today. Regardless of where everyone stands on a particular issue, it always feels good to be part of a community who has so many people reaching out from a space of general care, both about the students and the teachers. So I hope that everybody continues to feel comfortable both sharing and receiving information.
That's right.
That's okay. With an open mind, knowing that everyone comes from the same space of general care for the well-being of the students and the teachers, even if as individuals we see different paths to get there. I would also like to make a statement addressing the large volume of comments on the changes in both the graduate, graduation requirement and the competency determination. These changes were proposed in light of the ballot question that passed last year to eliminate MCAS as the competency determination for graduation from high school across the state. There've been a lot of discussion and review about these recommendations that were proposed at the last meeting, and I'll let Darius speak to that in a bit as well. The intent was not to cause division in the community, nor was it to stand in the face of the results of the ballot question as some have suggested. Unfortunately, what was left in the wake of the ballot question was the need for each district to come up with their own competency determination. The question before us as a district, and ultimately as a state, is what measure or measures will we use to determine if students have met a level of education that's consistent with what we expect of a high school graduate? MCAS did not go away. It will still be administered and continue to be used to assess the trajectory of students over time, and areas where we, as a district, need to be aware of deficiencies or a need for extra attention either on the student or district level. I'm not saying it's a perfect tool, but it's what we have until we or the state identifies something else. This is the most pressing for any students who have yet to pass the previous competency determination. In our case, I'm told this is seven students. So at this time, the state hasn't offered specific guidance, but since our last meeting, Governor Healy has announced that there's a council that's charged with studying and making recommendations on a new statewide graduation requirement. We aren't sure what that will look like or how long it will take to get one. One piece that I hope the public is open to hearing is that while we know what the results are of the ballot question, we're still left with a need to discuss what competency in graduating from high school in our district and in the bigger picture outside of these walls in Massachusetts looks like. Many people referenced life skills in their emails to us. What are those life skills? How will we measure those to ensure that we're using the same or similar bar as other districts? Will it be the same in our district as they are in Boston, in Cape Cod, in Greenfield or Springfield? This is the discussion that I hope as a district we are starting, not pointing fingers at what the result of the vote was, but engaging in a productive discussion about where we go from here and what options and standards do we want for our students and teachers going forward.
Don't know if you have anything to add prior to public comment. No, I think Holly, you have your own first.
Holly Johnson, I'm the co-chair of the District Special Education and Parent Advisory Council, and I'm also a parent in the district. The CPAC did already write the letter and signatures from our members, and I'm hoping that everyone had a chance to read it. I've heard that we are not making that decision about what we talked about, MCAS that was talked about last week, and I want to thank everyone who took the time to really go over that and to take into account what parents and community members were saying. CPAC would love to be included in helping create policy or procedures or have our say when they affect children with disabilities. I fully understand that something has to be put in place because MCAS was taken and now we have to come up with something else. I think putting a standardized test as a requirement, any standardized test, puts many students at disadvantage. My students are at a disadvantage. I was just at an IUP meeting a week ago, and we went over standardized results, and I was told by the teacher, "This doesn't reflect your student. It doesn't reflect your ability." And so I would hope whatever that you come up with, it would be some alternative for kids who cannot pass, simply cannot pass standardized tests, because they still need a diploma to get a job even if they're not on a college track. I want to thank everyone for listening.
Lou?
Yeah, thank you, Missy. Can you hear me? Okay? Great. I didn't come prepared to speak particularly, but I did want to, I did want to mention that I, I'm extending my gratitude publicly to Darius for the communication that he shared with the district around keeping students safe, as Tavo mentioned, in regard to our migrant families and also our LGBQIA community. And those words sound to me like a contract of care that I want to be upheld. And I know that talking about immigration, and I've been into the topic tonight, and I just feel very concerned that adults in the building will be prepared to meet that, will be prepared to meet their call to keep every child safe. And I'm eager to hear what plans and protocols are in place for adults in the building should they encounter on ICE and on grounds or in the building. And also, I just want to continue to support professional development and everyday support and training for people in the building to support every single student regardless of politics around, around who people are. Every single one of us is human and deserves dignity, care, respect, and safety, and I hope that we'll continue to uphold that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Good. Back to you, Sheldon, for?
Budget?
Budget.
Bob, can you pass those?
Hot off the press budget, I think.
Hot off the press, yes.
Actually.
All right. I'm going to share on the screen up there as well, if you want to follow along, paper or?
One more, this way. Oops. Morning.
Thanks. There's some right here.
Are those, the notes?
The last one's not stable. Thanks. Don't worry about it. Somebody's missing something. If you handed out the one that's not stapled. Who got the not stapled copy?
I did.
Okay. It's the same, the whole pages. Sorry about that.
We were one short, sorry.
All right. Literally hot off the presses from the budget subcommittee meeting. So, let me see if I can make this bigger up there. All right, so this is the full present, first full presentation to this committee. In January, subcommittee met, we made a full presentation to the committee. So you all are seeing this press for the first time, and we do believe this is a budget that goes forward to double periods, which will be a larger presentation then. This is not a state edition, but it has a lot of information. I think all of you now are veterans around the table when it comes to budgets, so you should all get it, but I'm going to talk through some things just because we have quite a good public here online and in person. So, getting to the bottom line of the budget increase, so we're talking about a 2.32% increase over FY '25, which equates to just over $300,000 worth in the budget. It includes a placeholder for wage increases for teachers and instructional assistants whose contracts are currently in negotiations, as well as wage placeholders for school-based and central office staff. I've also provided a chart here of the most significant expense increases within the budget. So health insurance, other insurance, retirement contributions, and out-of-district placement. The health insurance is the most significant, that is because Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, who we have our insurance with, voted an 18% increase on HMO plans and a 20% increase on PPO plans. This is not particular one just to Frontier. Anyone who's a member of the trust, which is, I think, about 30 surrounding communities and schools, they're going to all receive that increase. Maya is looking at double digits. I know Sunderland is part of Maya and not part of the trust, but they are talking about double digits for their insurance as well. And then there's a couple of other groups across the state that are looking at significant increases. So, also just to remind folks, which probably isn't discussed at this level as much as it is just administratively, the trust has had minimal increases over the last several years. Last year was 8%. The prior year might have been a couple, but the five years before that, there was 0% increase on health insurance. So, they're making a big adjustment right now. There's a variety of reasons for that, and that is reflected here in our budget. Based on what I currently know, so current enrollment, which will change, always does with new staff coming on or people dropping, but we do feel like this increase should be adequate for next year. Other insurance includes an adjustment for liability, auto, student accident, workers' comp. We're looking to bring that up to where it is in the current year. We don't have what the rates will be yet for next year. I don't actually usually get those until late June, which is unfortunate. It's not part of the budget cycle, but we're making a best case, best case guess in adjusting for $30,000 there. Retirement contributions is the Franklin Regional Retirement Assessment that we pay. That's up by almost $30,000. And then a minor increase in out-of-district placement, which really, $12,000 isn't much in the grand scheme of things, but out-of-district expenses are one of the most significant costs in our budget, so I think when we are having changes, it's good to talk about them, whether they're up or down. Any questions yet?
How many kids is the 795,000? Do we have an idea?
I don't know that. I'll go with the top.
So representative to the, are you satisfied with their reasons for the 18% increase? You alluded to there being a lot of different reasons. Pumped about that?
So, I think what they're claiming is one of the largest reasons is the increase in pharmaceutical claims because of the new weight loss drugs that are available. So not only are those drugs, you know, providing, providing diabetic support and the other things that Ozempic and Wegovy supported, but now there's a much more significant population utilizing those for weight loss, which means that your pharmaceutical claims are increased. So in order for the trust not to be in a deficit, they have to make an adjustment in the rates to help cover those claim costs. They also have a commitment to hold three months' worth of bills in their savings. You know, they have CDs and investment accounts and things, so that if the trust did have to close for some reason, which has happened across the state over the last couple of years, they would have funds to cover three months of expenditures should there be something major that happens. So am I satisfied with it? No, it's terrible. It's terrible for any of the cities and towns or any of the school districts. It's going to have an impact on employees as well, myself included, because my own premiums are going to go up. But based on the data that they provided, and I sit on the executive committee and I'm our representative for Frontier, I have to trust, just like you all trust me in the budget presentations, I have to trust that what their president has presented is accurate data, and he's the one boots on the ground doing that work every day. And I do believe that they did the appropriate thing in making the agreement. Only three members voted no. Everyone else voted yes.
Zero, 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 and then you need to go to 18. We did zero, it's a hell of a way to run a project.
Yeah, and that, that came up as part of the conversation. This is totally off-topic of our own budget, but I think it's a really good question, and you know, that came up, that in the future, the membership, so regional schools, Deerfield, Conway, Whately, like those folks spoke up and said, "We'd rather you have a 2% or 3% increase every year versus nothing and then have this hugely inflated amount." So, does that answer your question? Not a whole lot we can do, and here it is reflected in our budget, so. All right, I'll keep us moving along. So what I want to point out and talk about next is that to get to the 2.32%, and this was part of the big discussion tonight with the subcommittee, we had to make fast changes to this. We are using $100,000 of rural aid and an additional $100,000 of school choice to bring this budget number down to 2.32%. It would have been at 3.86% if we did not have those additional funding sources. It doesn't seem like a lot of money, you know, 3.13% I think is good percentage growth for our budget. It's been pretty consistent with our historical numbers, but when we get to looking at the assessment and talking about what the impact to our towns is, it does have a much more significant effect. No new requests are included in this. This is strictly a level service budget, so based on existing programs, staffing, and student needs. Total budget, because we use grant funds and revolving funds to help offset, is 15.5 million, just over 13.5. You can see the total there, 500,000 in grants, and then 1.7 in revolving funds, which is primarily school choice, but also our special education revolving account funds. student needs. Total budget, because we use grant funds and revolving funds to help offset, is 15.5 million, just over 13.5. You can see the total there, 500,000 in grants and then 1.7 in revolving funds, which is primarily school choice, but also our special education revolving account funds, significant portion of salaries and wages in particular, because we bring students in from other districts up north to mission. I'm not going to go over these numbers, but you have it there, historical figures. The average over the six-year census has been 2.74. So, I think the 3.13 that we originally started with was a good spot. 2.32 brings us down below the average over the last six years. So, I think our member towns will be happy with that. Enrollment data, you can see in the next chart that resident enrollment is staying pretty consistent. It's grown by one student over the last three years. School choice numbers are going down, which is bringing our overall total down. We're not seeing a decline in revenue, though, in school choice, because we do have some students who have special needs that come to us through school choice, so we receive over the $5,000 increase for those students in revenue. So, we're not seeing it reflected that our choice numbers are dropping. It is something that we have to keep an eye on because we do rely on choice pretty heavily to help offset the budget. So, if we have, you know, 12 outgoing seniors, we really should be looking to replace those 12 with, whether it's 7th, 8th grade or somewhere, you know, 9th through 11th, which is a little bit harder in older grade levels. But that's something that we'll be keeping a close eye on and keeping in communication with George about. So, the assessment is comprised of four components. There is a piece that's outside of our control that I talk about every year. So, the state required contribution is part of the Chapter 70 formula. That is what the state says our towns can afford to pay. It's based on multiple factors, one of which is enrollment, another is property values in the town, not taxes, but the state property values, and then income, actual income of your residents. So, if you have a wealthy resident population, the state's going to say that you can afford more than other member towns. And then we have the additional amount to cover the full budget, because we spend well above net school spending and the required state amount. Our towns have to pick up that amount, capital projects, and then debt service. There's no debt assessment for FY26. We paid off all of our loans last year, if you recall, just shy of $1 million we funded with various funding sources. So, there's no debt assessment, and we are not recommending a capital assessment either for next year. We are going to be doing some capital projects, but administration is going to recommend to the subcommittee and then it'll come to full committee that we use existing funds. So, that could be school choice, could be rural aid, could be other miscellaneous revolving accounts that we have available. I'm going to make this a little bit smaller because some of these charts are going to be hard to read up there. All right. So, general fund expenditures, there are classifications identified here based on the DESI chart of accounts. So, these are the major categories, not line by line, obviously, but some of those lines and the categories. And you can see what the changes are. So, the general fund is presented today at just shy of 3.3 million, which is $381,888 over the prior year. And then you can see the increase or decrease by category. And what I want to point out, that the student services and the operations, while it's showing reductions, that's where we apply the rural aid and the school choice funding. So, we have not cut any services to bring the budget down. That's a new report for everyone to understand. We're simply using additional funding sources to help offset. Revenue. Revenue is pretty bleak. When you look at these numbers, you can see we've only had $23,000 in growth. The state actually says our towns can afford $13,000 less than prior year towards the budget, so that's been accounted for. And then our Chapter 70, because we are in hold harmless, which is stagnant or declining enrollment, we only receive the minimum per pupil contribution. So, that is less than $36,000, which nets to $23,000 roughly for additional revenue. It's really not a lot of money when you're looking at your budget growing by, we just said, 302,000 almost, and then we have 21,000 or 23,000 in new revenue. That means that our member towns have to pick up the difference, which is a significant number. And that was part of our conversation with subcommittee today, was what else can we do? And it was the decision to use another $100,000 of school choice to help reduce the liability to our member towns. So, their contribution additional to be funded on top of last year's is $278,985. And getting into our assessment, so quickly just to explain the way that the assessment works, it's based on a cost share percentage. So, it's a five-year rolling enrollment. We dropped off 2020 and we added 2025 numbers, which this is based on the October 1st assessment, not based on the current enrollment. It's based on that 10-1. So, we show 2190 students in the five-year rolling enrollment, which is a change of 48 students from the prior calculation. The impact to our towns in the cost share is demonstrated here. So, Conway, Deerfield, and Whately are seeing minor decreases, and Sunderland is seeing a pretty significant increase because their enrollment number increased by 18 students in that prior year of change. And what does it actually look like, the bottom line? I know everyone likes to get to the bottom line. So, here is the assessment mapped out. FY26 compared to FY25 and the change per town, and then you can see there's no capital and no debt. Conway, the state says cannot afford to pay at the capacity that they have in the past. That is where that reduction is coming from. They've either had a significant change in property values, or more likely, they may have had some very wealthy residents move out of town, which would change their ability to pay based on the Chapter 70 formula. So, they're seeing a significant reduction in their assessment. Deerfield is coming in at 4.51% higher than last year, or just shy of 202,000. Sunderland, 9.39, almost 223,000. And Whately, 5.86, which is 60,400 over the prior year.
Stay on that screen. We're all working out. We used to track 25, 26, and now we're 27.
It doesn't. It might have been a mistake in my updating the... I literally updated this in 14 minutes. No, I wanted to be accurate, so I'll have to update the math. I can assure you that the percentages and the dollar change amounts are correct. I'll update the FY26 numbers.
She had this all done for you in 14 minutes.
I did.
I'm sure. I picked the right number. I was going to add 25.
Oh, maybe I did. I can fix it. These numbers in the change column are accurate. So, that is the growth for each of the four towns. The reason that we applied the additional $100,000 was because when we looked at this originally with the budget at 3.13%, Sunderland was over 10, Deerfield was over 5, and Whately was at almost 7% increases. And the committee just felt like those numbers were not feasible for our towns. Even as they stand right now, they're still pretty high, especially when we add in the elementary increases as well, because three of the four towns are having larger growth in the elementary budgets too. So, this is where things currently stand. I think that that's the last piece I had. I'm going to go look at the... and fix the changes, or fix the mistakes that I have in there. Next steps, just the next upcoming meeting. So, tonight you're getting the presentation for the full committee. Public hearing is March 4th. Budget vote is on the 6th. I think Sunderland and Deerfield town meeting dates are correct, but I couldn't find them on their website. Whately, I don't believe, has set their town meeting date yet. And then Conway is usually that first Saturday in June. So, we have a limited amount of time between now and the public hearing, which is where we would make additional changes should the committee wish to bring any of the numbers down. What else can I answer? What other questions do you have?
I would just ask that Bill, in the past...
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry. In the past, we've taken $200,000 out of free cash to bring the assessment down. This year, we're taking $100,000 plus $100,000 from rural aid.
$200 from E and D will still be used.
Okay.
And applied to the assessment.
Okay.
But we're using $100,000 of rural aid and $100,000 of school choice to bring the budget down. So, they're sort of, they're two separate things in where they show up, but essentially, we're using an additional $200,000 to support the town.
I missed something in the...
No, it's a good question.
So, talking about rural aid, so we have not used it to offset the budget in the past, but rural aid is really the state's kind of attempt to help the districts that are getting so short-funded by Chapter 70. So, we are spending, you know, we call it year in the rear, year in the rear, when we talk about like school choice spending, meaning that we are using this year's money in next year's budget. It gets kind of tricky because technically you have to spend rural aid in this fiscal year, but we're going to, you know, we'll shift like, you know, basically we'll be shifting like school choice and applying to next year, but using those funds as the market. And those funds are not guaranteed, so it doesn't show up in our revenue. It's like a grant. Right now, the governor has evenly funded it for next year, so it is something that could be cut. And so, it is like we're cautiously using it. So, we're applying 50% toward this budget. We're doing the same thing in the elementary schools, not putting it all in. There are districts around us that have to put all in. And then when you have, you know, rumors of 9C cuts or that kind of stuff, that would decimate their schools during that year because they would have to make cuts in order to reduce those things. So, we're trying to do a healthy use of that to bring down the burden on the taxpayer. The other application is that we are applying the other half of rural aid, which we're going to talk about later, we hope to, toward the fire alarm system, because we got the bids in and they came in higher. We have to get it done. And so, by using the money that way, again, we're not going to the towns for any capital, any capital expenditures, so we're holding that in house. So, it's, there's savings at multiple fronts, and the way we're using the money in the towns is just coming in different pots. From the capital, we know capital request and, you know, trying to work down that budget. But it's important because that's a new, looking at rural aid, we haven't used it in this way before. And once we start to use it this way, we start to use this way moving forward unless we make a, you know, find a different funding source to offset that in the future. So, but I think it's the appropriate thing to do because I believe that is the state's helping the taxpayer in town.
Phil, those numbers that are up there are fixed and correct. I did paste into the FY25. You have that, right? So, but the change doesn't, didn't change.
Shelley?
Yes.
Would it be possible to get a summary of what grants were applied, the designations of which ones are federal grants that might be at risk under the current administration?
I don't believe any of our grants would be at risk from federal cuts because I don't think they can... Karen, I'm looking at you because I think I read this, but IDEA would not be impacted by any federal cuts, as far as I understood it.
There was a clear statement that Title I, I don't...
Title I is minimal, but that could be...
They're making threatening noises about these things. We don't know, and they're saying they might not listen to the judicial system, saying they have to...
I can absolutely give you a list of grants, primarily Circuit Breaker, which I don't, that's a state-funded.
Sure, that's state.
IDEA, and Title I, and Title I is only $40,000 for the budget impact. There may be other things that curriculum uses the funding for that we would also have a negative effect on if they cut that, but that's it. Only those three.
But where it's hidden is...
It's only 500 and 15...
Is the federal money then goes into DESI, and DESI's grants are funded in federal, so we don't see the direct line to the federal government. So, if, let's say you have like, we have a safety support schools grant. We don't know if, well, we don't know on hand, if DESI's getting money from the federal government to go into safety support schools, right? And so, because we get the grant from DESI, they may be the facilitator of the money given to the federal government. That's a lot. That's a couple steps back. So, we'd have to look at all grants and try to research them backwards a little bit.
And that would have a greater impact. There's definitely more federal grants that are not, they don't have an impact on the budget, but there's other projects happening within the school. Safety and supportive schools is one that we just received. It was about $10,000, I think, but it's not typically for budget-related needs. But I can definitely generate a list for you. Yeah. What other questions? It was a lot of information. How do we feel about the assessments and the 2.32% increase on the general fund?
Bill is happy.
Winner, winner, chicken dinner.
Hey! Conway's the winner this year.
Yeah, but I mean, at the cost of losing a lot of students to go to Frontiers, it's something to brag about as well.
Yeah, the Chapter 70 formula has Conway down 19 students from last year.
I would like to point out that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is a thoughtful budget because Frontier is trying to help the towns as much as possible. I think that there is an eye towards understanding what the elementary school budgets are and trying to put the towns in the best position to be able to support those. Also, not asking for capital, there is a line of thought that we should be asking for capital every year, but that by not asking for capital this year, it is trying to help the towns as well, so that this budget was formulated with an eye towards trying to do as much as possible for the four towns.
Absolutely. And we do have capital projects that are, you know, we did put off, the capital committee did, we talked about the parking lot. Those of you who've been out in it today, you can see it is, and it's a million-dollar project. I'm just throwing a blanket number out there, you know, it's, you know, 800,000 to 1.2, right? It's going to be somewhere, depending on what you do and how you fix it. It's a big project, and so we're not going to be able to, after just doing the, you know, remember, we went out to take on debt and then we paid that all off, but we used all that COVID money and all that savings in order to do that because that was the appropriate thing to do. So, you're absolutely right that we are holding off this year because three of the four towns are, elementary budgets are higher than we normally put forward. Not crazy compared to what we're seeing in other communities. You know, there's costs going up across the board. I think overall, we're under control, if that's a good way of saying it. But it is absolutely looking at that. I'm looking at that. And so, we do need to continue, and I look at members with the different select boards and such in the room, have that conversation that we are trying to adjust it based on the towns' needs and not just pushing forward everything we want. And even some places, you know, we go out to parking lot, you guys say, "You need to fix this." But we're holding off one more year. We're also trying to see if we can get another grant around, you know, a little vulnerability around where the rainwater goes and that kind of stuff. I don't know if there's going to be much, not putting a lot of stuff that's going to happen, but we got to at least try.
I would just echo that, that that is not just what we've done this year, but this is a trend that when you think for the budget, that you guys have thought about, what do we do to help the towns? And I hope that even those finance committees might not tell you that in person. I hope that somewhere they, that that's what the mindset going into this.
Yeah, I think we're trying to have, I know Darius and I at a minimum in the subcommittee as well, and all of our school committees, that conversation of looking at the whole of how education impacts the towns. We know it's the most significant part of their budget, so we're doing our best to make fiscally responsible decisions and keep things as low as we can.
So, I believe you're going to take a vote to move this forward to, vote agreement to move this forward to the public hearing.
It's been a motion to move this...
It's not a motion to accept a thing, it's just...
No, just to move this forward.
To move it forward.
So moved.
One second.
Let me go roll call for you. Chris, Jessica?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bill?
Sure. Yes.
Yes. Keith?
Phil?
All right.
Thank you. Next item of business is the graduation requirement completes of these determinations that have been put forward.
Sure. So, the revision, you know, so we did have a lot of conversations, and we also had a lot of conversations with our faculty as well. And, you know, the idea of making M-PAS a...
Yes.
Keith?
Phil?
All right. Thank you. Next item of business is the graduation requirement and competency determination. One of them put forward.
Sure, so.
A revision of.
So the revision, you know, so we, we did have a lot of conversations, and we also had a lot of conversations with their, our faculty as well, and, you know, the, the idea of making MCAS a required to even take really struck a chord with folks, and where the direction are we going with standardized testing? I think it's very important to understand that MCAS is not going away. We are still gonna be judged on MCAS, and I think the proposal we brought forward, and I know I've written this several different ways in, in, in letters to the school committee, you know, our intention was not to cite the kind of passion about the question too, but what are we doing moving forward about our own accountability of MCAS, the students are gonna be taking? And in part of that, so this evening, what I'd like to do is administratively request to table the MCAS requirement, the MCAS graduation requirement, even taking the test, any portion of that, and just move forward with the competency determination proposal, which is the successful completion and passing of English 10, US History, Geometry, and Biology. Okay? And so those are all sophomore, usually sophomore level classes, and would meet the criteria of what we need to put in place for competency determination. As you may have also heard, Governor Healy has put forward a council to review graduation standards and what they would look like around the state, so whatever we do put forward, even with these competency determinations, we'll likely be adjusting it. I think it's gonna take a year for them to come up with anything, so this will be for this year's graduates, and likely next year's graduates as well. And also remember competency determination, I know we talked about it a lot last time, but everybody watching, we still have grad, graduation requirements, and then we have to create a competency determination. So they still have to pass the classes that we put through as part of our graduation requirements, the long list of different courses and whatnot that we require them to graduate. So this is no change what we already do in order to graduate, but you have to have a competency determination put in place, and they kind of, I say they dumped it on local schools in, in how to, coming out of the November goal of dropping the MCAS as that standard. So that's what we're looking for tonight. I do think that there is a healthy conversation out there, and I think we have to continue it in the sense of what does, and I think Missy did a great job of kind of saying that what, when we create standards, how do we examine how our students are doing versus the rest of the state? How do we measure our success versus other schools' success? I think those are important things because over time, we may all be, you know, things will, as you create your own internal assessments, how are you measuring up versus external? You can't just use SAT scores or that kind of thing, because only a certain number of students are taking those tests. So, and I use it again, a standardized test, but some kind of test is standardized measure, so probably not tonight to have that, but probably we will have more conversations as time comes forward, if the committee's willing.
So I'm gonna make a suggestion that we split this into two pieces, and we have first, I would entertain a motion to move forward with the new competency determination, and I don't know if you want to specifically list the 10th grade courses there, or the 10th grade courses presented at the last meeting.
I will make that motion.
And again, I'm gonna do a roll call for you, Chris. Jessica?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Mary? Bill?
Yes.
Bob? Yes? Phil and Chris? And then we can do the second portion of this, which is the request to table any change in the graduation requirements. We'll take a, a motion and then a second, and then we can do discussion after that, if there's any discussion to be had.
Move the table, man. Second.
Any discussion?
You table, you don't take action, then you gotta vote to take it off the table, then you gotta put it on the next agenda, so it's, it basically goes away without having to go into the, the weeds of that discussion.
Seeing as there's no discussion, Jessica?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Mary? Bill?
Yep.
Bob?
Yes.
Yes? Keith? Phil? Chris? All right. Motion passes. The change in the graduation requirement is tabled. All right. Next item of business is to accept a donation for the entryway sign and establish a revolving fund for that purpose.
Yes. So.
Yes.
Yes, do those things. So we have a community member, a group actually, started with the Hoopsters, right?
The Sunset Hoopsters.
Sunset Hoopsters who were using the gym pretty regularly here, right? They made a significant donation, I can give you the exact amount on all of these, but I also have a total for you because we could just work the total. But their intention around the gift is to replace the sign that is out by the main road that we currently, you know, put letters up on every time we have to change the monthly calendar. They would like to see something digitized perhaps, leaving the design and the final decision up to the school, but that is their intention is for the donation to be put towards that. They had a conversation with Darius, and I believe George was involved, and Bill Hildreth and facilities to kind of get some estimates on what the cost would be. So their goal is to raise about $20,000, and we are looking to establish a, or vote to establish a revolving fund to keep this money in a separate account so that we can keep track of the donations coming in and the expense going out. And then also a vote to accept the donations received of $10,136.86 for this purpose.
Need a motion to?
So moved. Second.
All right. All in favor? Okay with that, a roll call on this one? All right. Are you abstaining?
I'd like to make a partner with Bill instead.
All right.
You have a digital sign coming down the hill going into your town.
All right. Hopefully not so stingy on this next one donation of $4,000 from Yankee Candle.
So we received, I think we, we didn't receive it in time to put it on the agenda last time. That's what happened, so we, we knew about it, but Yankee Candle has once again did a generous donation to Frontier Regional for $4,000 to be used at the discretion of principal. And in the past, we've always used that toward student-based need and events and that kind of thing, something to enhance something we already do, not to replace versus plan something that's in the budget. So, and so we need a motion, we need a motion to accept the $4,000 for Yankee Candle.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
I think we should declare the front sign surplus property, so Phil can buy it.
Yeah, Conway can have it. I'll hope, I'll hope you carry it up there.
All right.
We won't give you all the letters, though. So you have to really, you know, be creative, like potluck supper, you mix in half the letters, you know?
All right. Motion passes if you mix that amongst the banter. Darius, you're gonna present the.
So, right, so we did open up the contract of our business director, or director of finance and business administration, and the good news is, we were able to come to an agreement and extend her contract for two years. The terms of the contract are to do an adjustment this year to move her salary from 128, by 128, 150 to 133, 150, and then the following year doing market adjustment to $150,000, and then the two following years to follow unit A of 38, it's called, adjustment. The subcommittee, which you could also chime in if you want to afterwards, but looked at market, where the market has changed for business directors, overwhelmingly shows the amount of money that goes through the eyes and brain of Shelley here is, is, is an immense responsibility. She does five budgets, where the majority of our surrounding business managers are doing one, maybe two, if they're unfortunate. None of them are as unfortunate enough to do it five times, the amount of meetings and so forth. The committee also discussed, you know, having active discussion about how, what can be done to reduce the number of night meetings. There are some that are so required, and there are some that, you know, we could do some more finagling of our schedules to do less nights out when you have somebody, it's myself included, it's all right, I won't do that, but I'll write it later on, Shelley. But, you know, we have young family, you have family at home, and you have other events and that kind of stuff, having, you know, double-digit number of meetings in a single month, nights out, including having to be here during the day for most days, is a lot. So talking to chairs, having conversations about what we can do more to make the job desirable. So, anyway, that is the contract. You do need to vote it. It was decided to take it to each individual instead of having one meeting, giving just on this alone was a little bit too much, so it's gone to each school committee to approve. So we need just a general approval, and then Missy will sign.
So moved. Second. And I wanted to say was, it was a, it was a nice group of us. We're all, I think I was in North Carolina, and we're all online, and, but it was a good conversation that the chairs had with Shelley and Darius about this, and we know how important Shelley is to our district, and, and I know there's a lot of townsfolk from all our towns that appreciate the work that Shelley does too, so.
If you had a few guys that all ridden the roller coaster as many times as the three of us have had, you would realize the way this place runs compared to the way this place used to run. Do not fool with that.
I think that the other piece that's important, as much as we really appreciate the work that you do, this is also something that needs to be in place for the longevity of the position regardless of who's there, that the amount of, of meetings outside of work and where the market is, that regardless of who's in this position, this was a space that at least needed to have a discussion about if it's not Shelley, what kind of changes do we make so that somebody will be in this position for any amount of time, let alone an extension of Shelley's time here? And I think that's important to keep in mind, that this is just where this position is and the demands of our district in particular, that we need to be mindful of the pressure that it puts both on Shelley and Darius to have the extent of evening meetings that they have.
Yes, staggering numbers. He's got it way worse than I do.
We'll try to help you with that.
Is there any other discussion? I'm gonna do a roll call for this, go ahead, Chris. Jessica?
Yes.
Olivia?
Absolutely.
Mary?
Yes.
Bill?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Keith? Phil? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Increase funding for the fire panel?
Okay, so you, we have two pieces of the fire panel that we're gonna talk about tonight, so increased funding and the contract, they go hand in hand, but we're gonna do them separately. So I think we had asked in October for an additional $200,000 to fund the fire panel. We had originally allocated 200, we added 200, the contract came in, about $65,000 over that $400,000, and we wanna have some flexibility with contingency, plus we've paid the engineer, and then we've paid procurement services out of those funds as well already. So we are looking for approval of additional $100,000 to fully fund the fire panel project, which will give us about $15,000 for contingency, should there be any changes that need to be made. And we would propose that we use the remaining rural aid funds to fund the balance of this contract.
So moved. I just, I just have one question. We just.
Hang on. Let me just pause. We have a motion, but. Perfect. Go right ahead.
My, my question is, I know fire panels are so much different, but in Whately, we just spent, correct me if I'm wrong, about $9,000 for a new panel?
Yeah, so this is gonna be the whole system.
Oh, I know, I, I know. I know they have you differently, 9,000 panel for Whately and ours at X amount of dollars.
So it's not just the panel, they're rewiring the building. So we have, you know, horns that don't work in certain areas, we, you know, and so on and so forth. Well, everything's working, not working too, it's passing, but it, there, it's, it needs to be updated.
Needs to be brought up.
Smoke detectors, carbon dioxide detectors, you know, all those kind of things, all those heads are all.
Adding, you know, pole stations and things where we don't already have them because the code has changed, but it is a really good question. It is a significant project. I think we, how many bids?
Glad we have the money.
Four?
To pay for it.
Did I send you the tabulation sheet?
Yeah, you sent four.
Okay.
Well, this was original. So we failed on this one.
How many bids did we get?
And the quote was from three years ago when we started this conversation?
How many bids did we get, Peter?
I was trying to pull up the.
I have four.
Oh, we had four?
Yeah.
Yeah, we promised Bill so easy three years ago. We got this.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Keith.
I should ask it right now or wait?
Go ahead, this is part of the discussion.
So there was four bids, one, we're taking the, the, at least one at like 440 or so, and there was one in the 500, two in the 600 ranges? What was the significant difference between like the 600,000, 650 and 400?
So can we do that, sorry, I, I thought it was a different kind of question, but if we're just looking at the increase in funds, let's limit the conversation to the increase in funds and then hold on that for the.
There's two votes.
For the award.
We gotta approve the funds, and then we gotta reward the bid, so.
Any discussion about the increase in funding for the fire panel project? All in favor for the increase in the funding? All right. So unanimous pass on that. Motion passes, and Phil, then we're looking, I think.
A motion to approve a contract or sign a contract with DMH Electric Incorporated of Sterling, Mass. for a total of $470,030 for the fire system replacement project, which is the base bid plus the alternate, and the alternate included replacement of the strobes and some sound on the exterior of the building.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? It's a pretty wide range.
Some of the, so some of the things they had a follow-up was like pricing on, you know, square foot per, for wiring, and that ranged, you know, there was huge ranges in that, not just, you know, for what they're, you know, they have to pay prevailing wage and such, but what they think the amount of time it's gonna take to do it is whatever, whatever their profit margin is. There was a wide range, we were concerned. So as part of that, we also do reference checks to make sure that the company who is the low bidder has done this work before and has proven references to do it, and we got quality reference checks back on this. So that's the thing about the open bid, I mean, some people may be coming in higher, they may misread the bid. The person who got the low bid may have misread it, but they're, they're stuck, they're on the hook for what they, they bid, so there is a wide, it's a $100,000 difference, you know?
Something was more hungry than the other person.
You could also have a number of jobs that they're able to take on, the size of your crew. Some places do overbid and, because they don't really want it, but they'll take it if they can get it, and we certainly saw that when we did the tennis court. We got bids that came in that were like, oh, they don't want this job. And when we talked, we hear through the kind of things, they don't really want it, but if you pay them for it, though, you know, they kind of, they, you know, they're pushing those things out, so it's all, all factors.
Appreciate it, Mr. [inaudible].
If there were a reason that we felt to disqualify them, we could, even, they're the lowest bidder, but if references were bad or a conversation we had, because Bill Hildreth, our facilities director, called and spoke with the owner, you know, because that has come up before in other projects.
And we've done that before. We've had this, we've had a low bid that came, not on this project, on a different project where they misunderstood the bids, and we disqualified them because it's the appropriate thing to do.
Any other discussion on the selection of the contract for the DMH Electric?
Some project.
They're gonna start before summer.
Oh, right, no, they're gonna start with summer before so they can get the whole thing in, sorry. But now I'm disrupted to the.
They expect it to be done by the. They expect it to be done by mid-summer.
Yeah, by mid-August it'll be done. They're going to do some afternoon things once school's dismissed, starting, I think, even in April possibly.
Yeah, I forgot we made that change. Because the bigger window we gave them, the cheaper they can make it too, right? And you say you have to get in and out in two months. Thank you.
Any other discussion on, all in favor of awarding the contract to DMH Electric? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Eric, yeah, go ahead.
Want the next one?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
All right. So the next one was just a kind of an update on procedure for immigration and law enforcement requests in school. So obviously, that obviously, there's been a lot of conversations that you've seen on the news and concerns about immigration law enforcement's coming to school and carrying out warrants or any other activity in immigration duties in the school building. And so I, I want to, what I've already done is created a procedure for immigration law enforcement requests with the district. I've trained all the administrators on that and they in turn have gone back and trained their front office staff and have, since the beginning, since last week, sent out this information to their staffs as well. But I, you know, I've been trying to give a little bit of education for people out there who, you know, are interested in this. One, if someone, the FERPA laws still, well, first of all, where this is kind of a mess and I, I hold some anger toward the federal government on this is that the Supreme Court in 1982 ruled that all children in the United States have the right to a public education, including undocumented children refugees and asylees. They're allowed to be in our building. We've invited them in and said that we will educate you despite whatever your immigration status is. And for many years, they became, you know, the immigration law enforcement would call this schools a sanctuary site. There are other sites as well, such as religious places, where they would not conduct business. And so one of the first things the federal government did is they said, no, schools will no longer be a sanctuary site. So we're saying, we will take everyone in, but well, if you're here, you know, you could be subject to law enforce, the enforcement of immigration officials. And so that's kind of a really, it's a messed up premise, if I have to put it out there. And we have a duty as educators to educate everybody. And I think it doesn't matter if, you know, their residency is with us or not. And the good that we do by educating everybody in front of us folds out there to the world, you know. And so I just kind of want to put that out there first because that is my philosophy on this, is that despite the immigration conversation that's out there, leave schools alone, let us do our jobs and don't, don't mix the two. With that said, FERPA also applies to our students in, in our schools, which basically, you know, we cannot share information on student records with anybody outside of the school unless they have a warrant. And they have to have a judicial warrant, okay? So a judge has to sign off on that. The big concern was that the ICE immigration, you know, the immigration law enforcement has their own internal warrants, okay? So they're doing their jobs, all right? And while, you know, they've been demonized as, well, they are, but they are employees of the federal government and they're doing their jobs. They get warrants internally that says you need to go and pick up so-and-so because they're in violation of their immigration status. Where, you know, they missed a court date, whatever, whatever the story may be. And they have those internals so they can go out and they can pick up based on that. The, that paper is the concern that was out there immediately, is that they would be able to come to school and round up people at school. Schools are not, while it says we are a public building, we are not a public place. The public, we have a certain level of protections. You cannot just walk into the school building and say, this is a public place, I can be here. No, we have a, we have the ability to say no. We have rules. So you cannot come in the building. You know, we have the ability to keep our school building safe. It's, that includes access to our students and that includes needing a judicial warrant, which they warrant signed by a judge, which is a much higher level and a lot harder to obtain. And so basically what we have put into place is anybody coming from immigration law enforcement to the school has to be processed through the central office, okay? And so either through me, I've trained Shelley and Karen Ferrandino, who's over there, my director of student services, to basically work with our attorney, will be on speed dial, to work, to make sure that the proper paperwork is in order from a judicial warrant, which again is a very high standard. So I want to put out there the reassurance to families that when you send your child to, to our school, we are going to protect them, their legal rights, and to make sure that any paperwork, any of those kind of things is properly done. If some, you know, law enforcement does show up with a judicial warrant, it's the same as a, like an arrest warrant, of that, the same kind of thing, where we will have to comply. Just putting that out there. The likelihood of that is very, very, very small. They would have to, and for, and I know this is secondary, so we can talk about the elementary level, but even there, it's even, you know, we'd never have a judicial warrant for a fourth grader. Again, the majority of our students in, at frontier regional are also not adults. And so to carry that out in the school building is very, very low, I believe it'd be very low. And we will see that, if that does change, you know, we are, all the superintendents are talking to each other. We have not seen ICE going into public schools in Massachusetts and doing, outside of a few individual instances where there were judicial warrants, where crimes were committed. We have not seen ICE doing that in the state of Massachusetts. I say the word yet because we will, we will stay, you know, very aware and active. So, anyway, so I just wanted to, that's what we put into place. What was sent to you was two documents for consideration that are from your national organization, Missy.
The National Education Association. Basically, this is off of a Safe Schools recommendation for policy and a Safe Schools resolution for students, for school committees to consider. And so a few, you guys have all gotten those through email. And this really would be a space, you know, I think when we first discussed it, Darius gave some reassurance that we have things in space. I think that, things in place, I think this gives some weight to those reassurances that we give to the community to have a resolution and a formal policy in, in place to reinforce that procedure.
So the draft, the policy, the policy one that is before you is a, almost a mirror image of what I did for procedure.
Yep.
So I guess that, that right now, and we would put this on, not for tonight, but we would put on the next meeting agenda, that basically would hold that as your policy so that if I was to suddenly walk out the door and a new administrator walks in, is the policy moving forward? If this would be the procedure moving forward, the procedure wouldn't be able to change. You know, regarding the resolution, that's, that's up for you guys to do. Right now, the policy, the elementary schools, we've had meetings already this month, have voted to put that on their agenda for the next meeting to discuss the policy side. Resolution was not done at all, the elementaries. The idea there, and I kind of did push it a little bit, you can do a resolution, that's, that's totally up to you. I think the policy sends the message that it's your, it's your law, your, your Congress, it's your law to say what you're doing and putting action behind your beliefs. The resolution's kind of, there's a lot of language in there that we'd have to really go through to make sure it's all appropriate to how we are. So I think it's a little bit more complicated. So that's my recommendation, is really to push the policy onto the next meeting agenda. Resolution, you guys can discuss.
So just a couple of, this is a, as we, a couple of additions to the proposed policy to consider. One would be in the part that, in the part that requires the furnishing of a ju, of a warrant signed by a judiciary officer or a magistrate, that the warrant also, a requirement that the warrant also states the name of the student sought.
How would they, you know, who to get if they came to a FERPA without the name of the student on the warrant?
They can't get a warrant without...
They can get warrants without a name on it?
They can't get a warrant without a name on it, but that's, but they're also, things, things are changing. So, but that's, that should be a requirement in policy because it's a current, it's a current statement of the law, but don't know if it will be tomorrow. And, and then the other thing is that why let them in the buil, are, are we required to let them in the building to go to the central office that is, can we not have a sign posted at all entrances saying, if you are here to enforce the immigration laws, call the central office and slip the warrant under the door. We'll be with you in a minute. I mean, you'd make it prettier than that.
So my, my thought of this is that these are, you know, these are law enforcement officers. And if they are going to, if they need a glass door to keep them outside the building to do their business, I think it's more of the, you come into the office, we have a conversation what your business is here. We have a conversation that they, let's say, don't have the proper paperwork to conduct business here and they need to leave. And I think you, if, you know, we are correct, if, if, you know, it's not a military state, you know, if they're going to, you know, garnish weapons and that kind of stuff, it's good, I don't think that's a realistic outcome that's going to happen. And I think that, you know, when, you know, I'm going to treat all law enforcement with respect when they come to our building. I'm not going to give them access, but I'm going to treat them with respect because they're doing their jobs. And so, I mean, I kind of feel like that's the appropriate, that's the appropriate thing. ICE agents are, you know, people who are in law enforcement, who dedicate their lives to, you know, whether or not people agree with that they're doing is that that's the administration's decision, not their decision. So...
I get that, but, you know, the flip side of that is that do we not have, do we need to take the maximalist position in support and defense of the children in our care, custody and control?
I think you're making an adversarial position right off the bat. That's about the worst thing you could do for yourself.
I agree with you, Phil. We do all we can do, but you're not making an adversarial position right off the bat.
So I would just try to clarify, we have a procedure in place, the pol, and I know that this was just set out this, this morning, so I don't know how much everybody's read through, that the policy recommendation that is, is there for review is that the school personnel must not allow any third-party access to a school site without permission of the site administrator. So I would say that that would kind of reinforce what your, what your suggestion is.
My underlying concern is that it, it's very difficult for someone, president or whatever, the, the first person that would encounter them in the central office, it's very, very difficult for a regular person to say no or to say, hold your horses to large human beings with weapons. It really is.
We also have a resource, resource officer in this building too, right?
Yeah.
So if somebody's going to come to the door and, and Mr. Ravish is in the building, I would imagine maybe one law enforcement would meet the other law enforcement at the door. Maybe, I mean...
Let's not go down this rabbit hole.
Keith.
I got one, just a clarification. So I actually appreciate Darius framing this, that this policy is following Supreme Court case law, that the district is not operating outside the bounds of the law. I also appreciate that the language of using professionalism and respect in all interactions, and I appreciate you also saying that this has not been, there have been no instances in schools. So I'd like to take down the tension. My question is the difference between school grounds and the interior of the building?
And what?
The interior of the building. What is, is it just inside the building or does school grounds come like outside athletic fields, stuff like that?
So school grounds is, so anything that, so this is where it gets tricky, right? And this is in, in conversation in the trainings that I had with, you know, the Attorney General did a training in cooperation with the Office of Immigration. It basically, so if you're at football practice, that's a closed event. It's not open to the public. A football game is. And so it'd be very, you know, and if they came to a football game to carry out a judicial, I mean, we would still treat anybody who's under our care where we could, but it does get kind of dicey because let's say you went to the game as a fan and your immigration status was in question. And they decided to track you down to the football game, I mean, let's, let's be, you know, I mean, that's not, it could happen, but the school officials are going to be in an awkward position in order to, you know, if you were there as a student, we would try to the best we could in that. It gets very messy and a lot of what-ifs out there, you know, within that. And we can only do the best we can. You know, we're not going to train, you know, do 100, 200, 500 hours of training for a very small what-if. You know, we're going to have the general policies in place and do the best we can with them. If things in the state change and we have a different level of protection that we feel as a district we need to do, then we will meet around this table and we'll have a change and discussion on that, is how I, my approach on that is. I think the likelihood is very unlikely.
I'd just like to speak to Phil's thought about whether or not ICE should be in the building in terms of maintaining a learning environment, that if we did have an ICE agent with ICE on their back standing outside your office, which is visible from the middle school wing, has everybody here met a middle schooler? That's going to get around among the students very quickly. And it's going to distract from learning for the day. I think that the impact on the students just from their presence, because it is very distinct, their responsibilities are very distinct from a town police officer. I think we should not shut.
There are also, the glass window doors are going to see right out and see this bunch of officers standing out front, waiting for, I think, and their role in that particular visit may not be politically whatever. We could have a, they could be there to, with a judicial warrant, with a, someone who has committed a crime and they need to do, conduct their business. And we need to find out what their business is. And I think you need to treat them as the professionals they are. You guys can go against it, but I just, I think that we are, the role of our policy and procedure is to ensure that the rights of the students are protected. Okay? Is it to go completely against all the federal government's decisions around immigration? That's, that's for you guys to decide. I'm putting forward that, you know, I think that it's, that my job is to protect students when they're in the building to make sure their rights are protected. If someone comes in and is trying to, we have to have the conversation with them. We don't know what their intentions are coming to the door, you know. And so anybody dressed in a uniform? And also, if you've all been to our buildings, an officer comes to the door, we're going to make a secretary walk out to that door and say, please, I'm going to make you stand here while I make phone calls? Realistically, the person who gets brought in, they conduct their business. If they're unprofessional, then we'll legally go after them unprofessional for being unprofessional. And if it's a police state, I, I think we're going down too many what-ifs and it's, it's getting a little crazy.
I, I would agree that I think that both in how I read this procedure and the policy recommendation is that the school personnel and the first contact they're going to have is when they push the button, right? So they're not going to be in the building. So if someone requests access and identify themselves as a law enforcement agent, that the first step shouldn't be to let them in the building, but to assess what their need is to be in the building.
Or they come in.
And this policy should state that explicitly, that this shouldn't be that anyone in some uniform shows up, requests access to the building and we say, come on in. That we have to assess if we are going to maintain that we are going to have a learning environment that's not unnecessarily disrupted, we need to assess what's your reason for being here.
But you, would you, would you invite them in, bring them to George's office, George runs, runs the building, and George can assess what's going on or he could bring somebody else in to help George?
I don't think it's an unnecessary, and I would, I would ask if you would do this in your home, if a law enforcement agent shows up at your home and says, I'm here, can you let me in first and then we'll talk about why I'm here later? I would suspect that you might say, why are you here? I'm not going to let you into my home until you tell me why it is you're here. Can you produce appropriate documents? And I think we should have the same threshold for keeping our community safe within our walls. They should expect that same standard.
Well, I, I agree. We're not going to let them in until they show us a judicial warrant with a name on it and stuff. I mean...
I think that's what we're saying. I, I think that's what we're saying, that they don't get to go have a conversation with George or Darius before. They show that level of, here's my reason for being here. And it has to have a certain... of, here's my reason for being here. And it has to have a certain validity to it with this, with the judicial warrant.
It's, it makes it more comfortable, I think.
We are talking about Frontier Regional, and I'm not going to pick on any other communities around our area, but we are Frontier Regional, and people come to school here for a reason, correct? To get a great education. I, I just, I want to make, you want to make somebody, if somebody's at the door and wants to come in and they have a warrant, you invite them in. I mean, it's not like they're going to run down the hall and grab somebody out of a freaking classroom.
But, but you ask...
But, but you, but they ask, exactly. You ask for the warrant. If they don't have it, then they can't come in.
That's what, I think that's what we're saying. That's, that's exactly what we're saying. I think...
It's not what Darius was saying.
No, it's not what you were saying. But I think that's what everyone else is saying, including, it sounds like that's what you're saying, that you're...
Well, the judicial warrant is the key thing.
Yep.
We have an ICE agent at our front door.
And if they don't have that, then...
Then you got to go to Plan B.
Yeah.
And we have Plan Bs.
Yeah.
And Cs.
Is it only ICE agents?
All.
Or all government agents? The FBI's at the door? Do they allow to come in? Do you have them stay outside?
Agency in the federal government.
Okay, so maybe we'll keep them all inside. Conspiracy theory.
But if I come, if I come to the door, you're going to ask me why I'm here.
Exactly, exactly, right? So any other member of the community?
Can ring the bell.
If you're a parent and you're an ICE agent, you're not allowed in the building.
No. But, but anyone who's...
Why I'm here?
Yeah. Who are you, and, and why are you here? It's the same, I would say it's the same threshold. The difference here being...
And keep it very simple. Do you have a judicial warrant? And if they say no, you say, ceiling.
Yeah.
And we're not voting on anything.
We're not voting on anything today. And, I, I don't know.
I guess if we just do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
I mean, we can go down a rabbit hole, though, and I think Darius said it right, is the what-ifs. There's so many what-ifs, what-if, what-if, you can't, you can't put a rule in place. Because if, if we start, if we start making walls up for every entrance, we're really going to have to make a wall up for every parent. I mean, I come in, and I, my, my, not really. My daughter drops her, she leaves her phone at school, or at home, and then I get a message from her friend, hey, can you drop my phone off? I mean, I, I walk up to the front door, and most of the time, I can walk right in.
You don't have to get...
And if I do, I'm not asked anything. I hit the button, and then I immediately get buzzed in, and I go in, and I go to the attendance office, I go to the main office, and I, you know, do what I need to do. But I'm not asked, I'm not questioned on anything.
And were you not asked or questioned the very first time you ever had any interaction with, because I was.
No. Maybe because I'm recognized as...
I mean, I think that that's a valid...
I don't know, but I, I just know that our, if we're going to start making policy for, I think, what, what Darius is saying, if someone comes to the door, invite them in, sit down at a desk, I don't think there's a harm with sitting down and saying, why are you here? I, I, it's, it's very, it's professional courtesy to just sit down, like, what's your business here? What do you need? Versus, if we start stopping everyone at the front door, we're going to have to stop every parent. We're going to have to, you know, make every, you know, the receptionists in the, in the, in the office are going to be inundated, you know, asking questions to every single parent. What is their purpose for entering the building?
Go ahead. Olivia, George had, oh!
So, and so I just want to chime in. So first of all, so our policy right now that I've talked to our, our front office about is, if somebody does come, you, they're coming in, we're bringing them to a private place right away, so they're, and we're, we're asking, we're getting our attorneys on the phone to determine whether or not there's any type of warrant or anything like that, because if there's no warrant, we're not doing anything for them. So I, I don't want to put, I'm not, I hear all, everybody's concerns. I'm, I'm afraid of putting pressure on our front office for them to be able to make that determination. I'd like, I mean, we've been instructed, and I've seen this from, you know, the Association of Massachusetts Superintendents and from administrators, that the first thing we have to do is get our attorney on the phone. They're the ones that are making the determination as to whether or not it's a judicial warrant. I don't know if our, if our front office has that capability to be able to do something like that. I've asked them to be able to, I said, if anybody shows up, and it's, it's a, it's a very slim chance that that's going to happen, you get me right away, you get them to a private place so nobody can see them, and then I take it from there. I contact the superintendent, I contact, he contacts our attorney, and we take it from there. That's how, that's why I've instructed our front office to do this. So I hear everybody's concern, I hear Phil's concern about not wanting to let them in the building. I just think from a pragmatic standpoint, I think that that's, I, I think that they're, they're, I think that that might be a little bit too difficult.
So, thank you for clarifying that. I think that's very important. But I also think we seem to be getting on this kind of crazy thing. Like, I don't think that anyone who shows up who's a parent who's dropping off a phone or a trumpet, I did eighty thousand times, you know, like, or anything like that necessarily needs to have a judicial warrant and be stopped there. I think the fact that most of us are visible to our, you know, front office staff and, you know, but I think if someone identifies themselves as an ICE agent, which they will, they're not just going to, you know, walk up and, you know, a cute little skirt and be like, you know, hey, I'm here, and then all of a sudden run in and say, now I'm ICE, you know what I mean? But they're going to identify themselves as an ICE agent. And I think at that point, you know, they shouldn't be, you know, allowed to have contact with other people unless they have a judicial warrant with all of the specifications that are set. But I think getting down the kind of rabbit hole of doing that for every single person who walks through the building is, seems to be a little bit crazy.
George, I'm wondering if you can clarify, what's the current policy for letting any person into the building?
So, basically, we know most of the parents who can directly get buzzed right in.
And if somebody who comes to the door who isn't a known entity?
They may ask for a specific, particularly, they just come straight to the office.
They have to sign in, correct?
They sign in.
Yeah.
Well, if they're signing, and they're just talking, so how, if they're not signing...
Yeah. But if they're, have a meeting?
For any meeting, yeah. They'll sign in, or they'll...
I think it sounds like it's a much more difficult piece to manage once they're in the building. I think it's, seems like it's a much more controllable situation with them out of the building. So...
There are so many exceptions that are worth considering, but once you get, once they're in the building...
Once you gain access.
Once they're, yeah, once you're in the building. And you, you, basically, the whole policy then depends on the good faith of the individual law enforcement individuals.
So, I would recommend that maybe the policy subcommittee can get together, and they can...
Yeah. So, I think that in the recent past, sometimes there's been some difficulty in getting enough folks together. Olivia, do you have a sense that there can be enough groups of the policy committee gathered to review this prior to the next meeting?
Sure. I don't know who else is on it, but I probably can be available.
Sure. So unless there's any further discussion, because I feel like this could go on for a little bit, we'll move on to the next piece of the agenda, since this is not a voted item, correct? I think I only have one piece to mention, and that's the, you sent out a piece about the audit, that they're going to come and would like to meet with five school committee members. Is that through all committees, or of Frontier?
Just looking for one from each committee.
One from each committee.
And if anybody else really wants to do it, they...
So if anyone happens to be free on Monday, March 3rd, from three to four p.m., I'm not.
I can kill two birds with one stone for Wakeley and Frontier if we need to.
You are, okay.
Something like that.
Yes, a good question.
Do you know how long people will be?
It says three to four.
Oh, I can't...
Yeah.
Probably come here, or like...
Yeah, please here. Come to, also know exactly where it'll be, but it'll be at Frontier.
Yeah, you can put me down for, if I can do both of them, to cover both of them. Unless somebody else here wants to go, or whatever, it doesn't matter.
Are you doing double?
I'll go Wakeley and...
Are you doing double duty with Sunderland as well?
Do you want me to?
Uh-uh. That's up to you.
Sure.
I think especially if, especially if you're covering both committees, probably not a bad idea to have more than one of you as part of that.
And just like the meetings are, or, or, or...
Do we know approximately how long they last?
An hour.
It's, yeah, it's a three, four.
They blocked off an hour.
I need to be teaching a freshman class at four o'clock, and I have a space here.
You have, you have to exit most of the... They're, they're very, they're trying to get a general view of things.
Keith, do you have anything from the collaborative?
Collaborative is servicing Frontier students. They're offering continuing professional development, but the majority of the meeting was that they're in a financial disaster right now. They're at about, about a $1.5 million deficit, and they're laying off staff mid-year. They're eliminating their licensure program. They are not in a good fiscal position. They are, there's a number of reasons. The number of contracts coming to them has dropped. They're competing against the state change, small business procurement laws, it got really technical, but they, it affected them. So they're, they are struggling right now, and they're going to give us an update at the next meeting about where they stand.
Wow.
They're, they're saying they're, they're about a year behind the fiscal cliff that a lot of districts are facing.
And we're going to go into...
No need to.
No. All right. So seeing as there's no need to go into executive session, I need a motion to adjourn.
Go to adjourn, we have a chair.
Executive.
All in favor?
Yes.